I forgot something. I need to go back up.
I think you're good.
Okay. I thought it was running late and I'm like, oh, apparently not.
They're going to be a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Good morning, Jason Yorks.
Good morning, Jason.
Hi, this is Jenny.
Good morning, Jenny.
Morning.
For those of you that are on the line, it is 10:01. We're just waiting for the commissioners to arrive.
I think Michelle emailed it to him, but she printed it so he would have it. I could be faster to take the stairs, but there were two girls getting in the elevator. And when I got to the top of the steps, they were coming off the elevator. I'm like, oh, should've just got on the elevator with them. I heard anybody in here today, like courts and my brother is everybody not. But there won't be that many people down here.
What?
I forgot to make you a pack.
It's okay.
Do you have an agenda?
I do.
Okay.
And I've got Mac right here, so if I want to get it.
Morning, everyone. Ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We pray for your guidance over our meeting this morning. Grant us your wisdom as we make decisions. Help us to resolve any disputes with grace, solve problems together, and have unity among us. Father, we remember this Saturday 58 years ago when Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. delivered his iconic "I Have a Dream" speech. A call for unity and equality is still needed today. We pray for mutual respect, equality, and unity among all people. We pray for our divided nation this morning, that we will remember the words and teachings of Dr. King. Father, you have created each one of us in your image, and we are all equal in your eyes. Lord, we remember this week the students that are returning to school to pursue their dreams. We ask that you protect and guide them through the school year, meet their needs throughout the semesters. We pray for wisdom and instruction from our teachers as they prepare these youth for life. Give them as strength and clarity as they instruct. We ask you to bless our teachers and let them never lose their heart for their students. Lord, we continue to pray for the Americans and Afghan people in Afghanistan. We ask for your safety and protection. And Father, we pray that you guide us each and every day. We pray for your mercy and protection. These things we humbly pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning. We convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time, and we'll ask for the approval of amendments in the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, Sally?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Public comment on agenda items only at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on.
2.0 is our informational series, county departments and what they do for you. And we have Jennifer McConnell, the Director of Court Services, here today.
Morning, Jen.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm assuming you want me up here.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's kind of difficult to try to quickly summarize what the courts do, so I'm going to just read some of the notes that I have and then provide some statistics. So I am here this morning to talk a little bit about the Lecombe County Courts, and specifically the Office of the District Court Administrator, which is where I'm employed. As we all learned back in Simmons' class when we were in middle school or junior high, the courts are one of the three branches of government alongside the executive and the legislative branch. Of course, there's the judicial, which is the courts. So when talking about the courts, I always explain to folks, the courts model a pyramid or a triangle. And the best description is to look at that bottom, the broad base, the foundation of the triangle. And what that is, is that's made up of our minor courts or the magisterial district courts. The next level of that triangle is the common pleas. The next level, then, of course, is the superior or the appellate court. And alongside that superior court is, in Pennsylvania, is the Commonwealth Court, which is actually very unique to the Commonwealth. I believe that we are the only state that has such a court. And the Commonwealth Court hears state and local government appeals. And then at the very top of that pyramid, or the tip of the pyramid, is the Commonwealth Supreme Court, which is the highest appellate court here in the Commonwealth. I'm here this morning to talk about that foundation of the courts, the minor courts and the common pleas courts. And here locally, that's what makes up our 29 judicial district under the administration of President Judge Nancy Butts, along with our office, the Office of the District Court Administrator, who manages the day-to-day operations. That includes myself and our newer Deputy Court Administrator, April McDonald. April is not new to the court. She's been with the courts for about 20 years prior to taking her new role as the Deputy Court Administrator. And then, of course, we work under our District Court Administrator, Adrienne Saul. Just to give you some quick basic information, the minor courts. Here in Lecombe County, we have six MDJs, which are the judges that preside over the minor courts. And they have their support staff that are located throughout Lecombe County. And they are elected by the local residents who they serve. And the MD or the minor courts have authority over conducting non-jury trials with regards to criminal and civil. Civil, they only hear cases up to $12,000. They also manage landlord-tenant actions. They hear traffic citations. They fix and accept bail in most cases, most criminal cases, except for homicides. They issue arrest warrants, and of course, they conduct preliminary arraignments and hearings to see if a case should be dismissed or if it should be transferred up to the common pleas level. The common pleas level are the Commonwealth's Courts of General Trial Jurisdiction. And here locally, we have five common pleas judges that are elected by all of the residents of Lecombe County. And they have jurisdiction over all cases that are not assigned to any other specific court, including any appellate jurisdiction over judgments that come up from the minor court or the MDJ courts. They handle family court matters such as divorce and child support, adoptions. They hear criminal and civil cases. They look over orphans court that include trusts and estates, and they manage jury trials. And of course, here locally, we have several different problems solved in courts that include mental health, drug, DUI, and veterans courts. I think it's important to share that the 29 judicial district does have several goals that we try to provide neutral forum for all court users to ensure impartial dispute resolution while maintaining integrity and providing equality and accessibility for all court users while treating every court user with respect. And I am proud to say that something new under one of our, again, not new to the courts, but our new Deputy Court Administrator, our office specifically, will be taking a closer look at case management and looking at our processes to make sure that we're efficient to help expedite resolutions of cases. I'm also proud to share that the courts have started to take a very close look at and will continue to provide reasonable accommodations to any court user under the ADA and to those with limited English proficiency. So anyone who, any court user who would require any type of accommodation, we encourage that you reach out to our office to talk more. I think it's significant to share that the courts provide oversight to the adult probation and the juvenile probation offices, along with our domestic relations section. I understand that all three of those offices will be here at a later date to talk specifically about what their departments do. One of the biggest responsibilities that the courts, and specifically our office, has is organizing and managing jury selection and trials. As we all know, trial by jury is a right guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States and also the Constitution of our Commonwealth. Jurors must be at least 18 years old. They must be U.S. citizens and able to read and understand English. And of course, to serve as a juror here in Lecombe County, you have to be a resident of Lecombe County. Here in Lecombe County, we follow the one-day, one-jury model. And what that means is if you are selected to report for jury selection, you would report for one day, typically just a half a day, either in the morning or a half a day in the afternoon. If you are selected to serve on a jury, you report back at a later date for the duration of that trial. And typically here in Lecombe County, our trials are usually one day, sometimes two to three days. And of course, if you're not selected, the juror is then excused and their service has been completed for at least one calendar year. Our office is tasked with managing the jury management system. Every year annually, especially now in 2020 and 2021, considering the pandemic, we have to prepare and organize and mail out and manage upwards of 38,000 summons letters that are mailed. In return, we process anywhere from 15 to recently 18, close to 19,000 excusals, deferrals, disqualifications, undeliverable returned summons. We handle all jury and all juror inquiries. We feel numerous, and sometimes I mean very numerous. I mean, our phone during, here very shortly because we just sent out a summons, our phone will ring nonstop answering questions, sometimes even complex questions from various jurors. We check in anywhere from 5,000 to 7,000 jurors annually who report for jury selection. And then, of course, we process the compensation for those 5,000 to 7,000 jurors who have reported. I think it's important to note that a national trend that we were realizing here locally too is that the courts are experiencing an increasingly large number of people who cannot afford an attorney and/or choose to represent themselves. This has, over the last several years, placed a heavy burden on court resources and actually has been very time-consuming for court staff. And we realized that several years ago. So in January of 2018, we actually, our office specifically, the Office of the District Court Administrator, brought the county's law library back into the courthouse under the direct management and operation of our office. It's going very well. I'm very happy with everything and the results that we've been seeing and the individuals that were able to assist. And just this year alone, in 2021, from January through the end of July, we have helped in person 466 court users. And I think it's significant to say that out of that 466 court users, only 10 of them are considered legal professionals. So what that means is 456 individuals probably are those who are representing themselves in the court system here in Lecombe County. We've assisted almost another 400 individuals over the telephone and via email, and we've distributed almost 400 court-related filing packets. Compared to 2020, during the height of the pandemic, we helped in person 512 individuals. And that's being closed half of March, all of May, April, and May, and then reopening by appointment only in June. So I think I'm very proud of what the law library has accomplished, and we continue to look at what we can do to help not just pro se or those who are representing themselves, but the legal community altogether. I'm just going to share some quick stats. These statistics court-related are from 2019. The 2020 stats have not been finalized yet, and these are all managed by the state. And 2000, and these are from the common pleas level to start. So in 2019, there were 2,752 criminal cases available for processing at the common pleas level. In 2019, there were 1,634 civil cases available for processing. In 2019, there were about 401 protection from abuse cases. In 2019, we had 1,828 spousal and child support cases available for processing. In 2019, we had 739 custody cases. In 2019, there were 778 divorce cases available for processing. And 2019, we processed 87 adoptions. And then to touch on jury statistics, now, again, this is in 2019. In 2020, the statistics are going to be a little different because of the pandemic. And then actually, what we realized in 2020 is that we would need to increase our numbers for juries. So our 2021 numbers are also going to look significantly higher than what they used to pre-pandemic. But in 2019, our office prepared and mailed 28,503 summons letters to jurors here in Lecombe County. Out of that 28,503, we were able to establish 11,327 qualified jurors. So what that means is about little less than 40% of the summons letter that we mailed, about 40% of those individuals were actually established as someone who could serve as a juror here in Lecombe County. Out of that 11,327, we asked 5,302 individuals to report for jury service. Out of that 5,302, 3,000, just over 3,000, were sent into the actual courtroom with 888 individuals sworn in and serving as jurors. Again, 2020 was very different. We didn't conduct all of our jury selections. But I can tell you, last year in 2020, we had 3,283 individuals report for jury service, and we swore in 216 who actually served as a juror. Currently in 2021, we had five jury selections scheduled. We did cancel the January selection because of COVID, but we have successfully conducted three. We are going to be conducting our final one in October. And I am very proud to say that we take the health concerns and safety of all of our jurors, all of the court users, very seriously. We've implemented several safety techniques to ensure their safety while they're serving as a juror during selection and during a trial. With regards to the minor courts or magisterial district courts, in 2019, there were 2,536 criminal cases available for processing. In total, there were 324 private summary and criminal cases, complaints, excuse me, filed. The MDJs, the judges, managed 14,504 traffic cases in 2019. They heard 2,617 non-traffic cases. They issued 989 arrest warrants. They presided over 1,870 civil cases, and they managed 897 landlord-tenant actions. I'm just going to finish up with keeping in mind the pandemic and the impact that it has had on the courts. We haven't really been able to, I guess, verbal describe all the impacts of the pandemic, but we have been able to learn a lot, and there have been some positive outcomes from the pandemic. One of them is to help limit person-to-person contact and keeping safety in mind. We have been doing a lot more field contacts with our probation offices. And I hope that the adult probation and juvenile probation offices, we'll talk more about that. With domestic relations, we realize that there are some initial conferences that we can do remotely. What we have done is we've encouraged, out of safety and to limit person-to-person contact, we have been encouraging folks to make and pay their costs and fines online through a secure website with the state. We've also been able to create a 24-hour drop-off system at the local MDJ offices where folks, at their own convenience and flexibility, can drop off payments securely in these drop-off locations. And I'll end with, the state has also recognized the importance of the lessons learned throughout the pandemic and the use of technology. And as a result, they've created what they call the Remote Proceedings Task Force, which has taken a very close look at how to conduct proceedings remotely through the use of technology. And what they have done is made several recommendations to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, all in hopes that moving forward, we'll be able to continue to expand hearings remotely using technology while they're keeping in mind court user's accessibility, the court's access to technology, considering live streaming access. And of course, we always have to consider court users who have limited English proficiency, those who have, who require accommodations who may be deaf or blind or hard of hearing. And we're taking a closer look at respect to not just criminal, but it's important to note that this task force has made recommendations to include civil, family court, juvenile court, orphans, and also the MDJ courts. Did I miss anything? It's very hard to summarize the courts in like five to 10 minutes. Thank you. I appreciate you allowing us to be here today.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, and I understand the adult probation, juvenile probation, and domestic relations will be presenting at a later date to talk specific about their department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Quick question for you. If someone wanted to run to be a magistrate judge, what do they need to do?
What I would recommend is that they would reach out to the AOPC, which is Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts, because there are some requirements either prior to or after. And find out what those requirements are, make sure that it is something that they would want to do, possibly reach out to voter services to make sure that they meet the qualifications within the jurisdiction that they want to run, and go from there. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Bid openings with Krista Rogers.
Morning.
Good morning. Proposal for printing of absentee ballots and mail-in ballots.
And there are six bidders. We are assuming these are per piece, although they do say lump sum, but you'll understand why I'm qualifying this when I read these prices. We have NPC Incorporated, the bid amount is $1.11. Pleris, P-L-E-R-U-S, $1.11. Phoenix Graphics is $396.73. Single Point Sourcing is $1.26. Fort Orange Press Incorporated, $1.96. And David A. Smith Incorporated, $1.23. So I'm assuming...
Well, the way we did it is because they have to give pricing per piece.
Well, that's what we thought it was per piece, but...
Be per voter and what's the charging to get a ballot out.
And so I don't know what the 3.96 is.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that and see what that is.
I figured it would have to be reviewed. So that was all we had.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Accounts payable cash requirements report with Randy Collins.
Randy, bring it.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present the accounts payable cash requirement report for invoices due through September 1st to be paid on August 25th in the amount of $2,392,558.67.
Okay, any questions or comments? Well, we have a lot of grants there and other sources to the tune of about 60%, 1.4 million. The county general's 845,000.
Which is 35%. I'll hand that. Okay. Motion, do something. The accounts payable.
I'll move to it.
All in favor, Sally?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.0 TDA action completed.
Thank you, Randy.
Your callback number is 915-705-670051. Press 4 to input a different callback number. Press... Message and exit the system. Pound to dial an extension. Zero to deliver your message and return to the attendant. I will repeat these instructions in a...
Why Jerry's trying to figure that out? We didn't receive a box in.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're asking you to approve the following updates to the TDA. At RMS Transfer Station, retitle the tipping floor coordinator pay grades 5/6 to a truck driver pay grades 5/6. And also at RMS Support, retitling the support... And also at RMS Support, retitling the support floater, pay grade 5.6, to equipment fueler, pay grade 5.6.
Okay, any questions on these two positions?
So this is people who are going to be able to do more, right? And that's, those titles are going to reflect that they have been doing and will continue to do more.
In the first one, the tipping floor coordinator, we have not been getting a big response, and we don't believe individuals quite understand what that is. And the fact that we would call it a truck driver, we currently have a truck driver that's at the transfer station, and by bringing on another truck driver, they can rotate that responsibility at the tipping floor. So we feel we have a better recruiting ability by renaming it.
Okay. Good motion, accept.
I'll second.
All in their side?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Okay, we'll recess the commissioners meeting at this time for the salary board. Salary board will convene.
And I'll address these individually. Should we vote?
Okay.
Okay. Commissioners, we're asking you, as part of the salary schedule, to approve the recruiting and retention package for the 911 center that was discussed at your previous meeting.
That's for you.
Could I?
Yes.
I don't know where to go.
I'm going to exclaim Roxanne.
Okay.
So we're on, or salary board action, 6.1 recruiting and retention package for the 911 center?
Correct.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'm making a motion and a statement. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to...
Let's hang on a second. Let's make a motion and then a second, and then a statement.
Okay.
Okay, so you made a motion.
But I'm making a motion that's adjusted to what was presented. That's why I would like to...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, procedurally, you do need a motion and a second on the floor. She's been seeking to amend the proposal. She could make a motion to amend.
Okay, so...
Are you hoping to amend what's been proposed?
Correct.
So I mean, I think you want to get it on the floor as proposed initially, and then you could make a motion to amend.
All right, so we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Well, the motion she's making is, as the solicitor mentioned, to amend something. I think we need a motion. I'll make a, I don't want to trump your motion, but I'll make a motion to pass the recruitment and retention package that we previously discussed at the meeting last week, which would be a bonus and retention for existing employees, a bonus for new hires, in the amount of $5,000 each, paid quarterly.
Okay. Can I have a second? Second, I'll second that. Okay, second. Discussion.
Okay. So first, I'd like to note that the action taken last week by the commissioners was not, as their solicitor stated, simply to approve the concept of the 911 recruiting and retention package. I took time to re-watch the meeting, and even Beth's comments at the end of the meeting thanking the commissioners for passing this package showed that she thought the process was done. It's not acceptable for the commissioners continually take action on items illegally outside of the process established within the law. The motion I'd like to amend for the recruiting and retention package to cover all public safety county employees, to include but not be limited to 911 employees, adult probation, juvenile probation, prison, pre-release, all other employees that worked during this pandemic and beyond, to ensure that citizens of Lycoming County were safe and secure. I would add the Pima funds being sought to reimburse the county for 911 portion of this package are not guaranteed. If it's not a reimbursable 911 expense, we can utilize the ARP or allow American Rescue Plan grant that Lycoming County has already received, not only for the 911 package, but the package across all public safety employees, as it is allowed by the American Rescue Plan. So many large Lycoming County departments are working overtime, having problems filling open positions, and yet continue to perform their duties while shifting to accommodate a pandemic in 2020. Not only those in the field and working with the clients, but those in administrative offices and those providing administrative support to them, who without them, they could not function. They continue to heroically serve county residents suffering from effects of the shutdowns and reduced employment in the county.
How much do you think that cost the county?
A lot of money.
Oh.
And you have 24 million that you have getting the virus.
Just a lot of money. Okay. Thank you for your comments.
So wait, she made...
She made a motion.
I made a, I was making a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
So can I just say to you that we had actually thought about, I thought about this, and as did my colleagues. The concern that I had is that working during the pandemic was a two-edged sword. People worked and they put themselves at risk. What they didn't have, because they got a continuous paycheck for the whole year, is they didn't have the stress that landed on so many of our constituents who lost jobs or who lost businesses. And granted, those people who didn't work didn't have the risk of necessarily getting the virus, but they had the stress of not being able to make house payments and car payments and all those problems. So I appreciate the comments you're saying. I think that we also are engaging upon a salary study and to try to see where various jobs sit in the county. And I personally thought that to use a lot of the relief money in the manner that you're describing would not serve all the people in the county fairly. We tried to be very fair during the pandemic with county employees. We took actions such as allowing them to get some vacation days, I believe, if I have that correct, that they, to not have to be required to use some of their paid leave when they were out. We did a number of things to try to make sure that our frontline safety workers were treated fairly. This specific retention bonus is for the fact that we've gone from a full complement down to probably 40...
We've gone from 17...
Down to eight.
We're going to be down to eight.
So we're at almost like below 50% staff. And so that was the reason for this, this bonus package on the salary.
We're at 11, and we had this on the agenda two weeks ago, where Beth presented it. We didn't make a decision then. We allowed the public, which should, public should have a say in everything. We asked them to please call us if they were opposed to it or they were in favor of it. So we waited for a week, and then at that point, we made a decision to accept the package. Okay, we didn't vote for it to have it finally done. We accepted the package, and then it goes to salary board, and that's what we're doing today.
And this is the first discussion that you're having with all members of the salary board right now?
Right. So I appreciate, just so that I can finish my, I appreciate what your goal is, but I think that it's, it goes beyond what I certainly am trying to accomplish with the 911 bonus, which is to make sure that our 911 center... It's, the problem we face with 911 is not strictly pandemic-related. It's complicated by the fact that the number of people who apply for those jobs has gone down. It's complicated by the fact that under our pay scale, people are not required to have a degree, therefore, they start at a lower rate than at some of our others. And I'm hopeful that the salary study that we're trying to implement among employees will find problems like that and propose solutions. So that's where I'm coming from on it, Control.
We've been very sensitive to every department through this pandemic, what their needs are, what their concerns are, the pay. We understand there's other departments that have been working excessively through this, and it's not been ignored. We've had discussions, but this is a separate issue. This has to do with a 911 center that is below the staff that they need to have made that office. It's a separate issue.
And I did stop over to your office maybe about a week and a half ago to talk to you about this. You were not in, and last week, you had the opportunity to have a discussion, but you left the meeting.
All the discussions that are related to salary board should be included with all members.
It was on, it was on the salary.
It was not on the salary board.
It was on the agenda, wasn't on the salary board.
It was on the agenda. Yeah. I mean, if you read the agenda, you should have stayed and made comment. We didn't know, we don't know why you left, but that's, that's up to you.
We're trusting it today.
I just want to emphasize also that we have to remember that in addition to county employees, we have a whole community of people out there who lost jobs, who are losing homes, and so from my perspective, to pay additional bonuses and so forth, even though the ARP money says that's one use, it also says there are other uses allowed, and I think the other uses would be a broader, more equitable use of the funds than just giving it out to county employees who worked. And that doesn't mean I don't respect and have the utmost appreciation and respect for what they did, but I also have, we have to take into account that we got people who have lost businesses and so forth in the community. That, that they do...
Totally agree. I just think that we have to stop being unfair in looking at things one at a time.
Absolutely. And that's one of the reasons why we held off on some of the requests that came through during the budget for various reclassifications, because we want to try to do something with this study that is more...
But the employees have been hearing that we need to do the salary study for multiple years.
I know, and we're working, we're working on it. We've had meetings with the state.
And they've kept that for multiple years, too.
Okay.
It's happening.
Well, the reality is that it first came out in the first EIP study, which is now called STAMP, the strategic, the program we engaged with the state. We've since re-engaged with the state. When the new board came on, we, and we're moving to STAMP 2. We did, we did the things under the first step that you had to do to get to the second step. You can't, you can't do the second step until you identify some of the problems and so forth, which we've done in the report. And now we're working with the state, and we hope that the state will help us by paying for 50% of what we implement. Not salary increases, but for example, if we need software to do various things. So we are, we are trying to work on that. We've taken some other steps, but it takes time. I mean, you know, we have to find a contractor who can do that work, but we don't intend to have it last forever.
No, we recognize the inconsistencies. That's why we're doing the study.
The study.
But this is a separate issue.
When, when we had, when we had a nurse shortage at the prison, we had no options. It wasn't a matter of us just wanting to fairly give out increases in the day. There was nobody applying. Why? Because hospitals were hiring nurses at this price, and that was, we couldn't find any, so we borrowed the order, we increased the price. Right now, we can't find telecommunication. Now, we did get lucky, and I believe we hired two, but that's a far cry from where we need to be. So it's, it's telling us that this job is not something that people want, even at the price we are paying. And we're watching other counties, I think, you know, slitting their own throats. We have to be very conscious that as we move forward, this is going to cost the taxpayers a lot more money. And I'm of a different opinion than my two colleagues. We have to address issues that come before us that are critical. And yeah, I want to see the study. What will be yielded from that, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, just so the record's correct, I mean, I didn't hear a second to the motion to amend, so if we have a second, that would, if I go back to the second, and you'd be back on the original motion.
That's correct.
I just, I hope you recognize, Controller, that it's not that we don't appreciate what those first-line responders did, also what all the county employees did, but that we're trying to create some balance.
It's just not what they just did, it's, it's looking at fairness across the board. That's where the motion came from. It's not just a pandemic issue.
Yeah.
And I hope you understand that, too. I'm not trying to pigeonhole a pandemic issue.
No, no. I understand what you...
But we do have a motion on the floor that we need to finish.
Yeah, great. Okay, so back to the original motion. Just commission review. Do you repeat that for the record?
That we institute the retention and recruiting bonus for the 911 center, which amounts to $5,000 on the retention, $5,000 on the recruiting, paid quarterly over, I believe, a thousand a quarter, so it would last for five quarters, excuse me, and that we seek to get those funds reimbursed when we, from Pima when we, or not from Pima, that we get them reimbursed from the 911 money that we seek to get at the end of the year.
Okay. Have a second. We had, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me?
Aye.
Okay, so it's the floor vote. Thank you.
Should I try that?
Yes, please.
Good morning, Jason York.
Okay, great, Jason. Thank you. Good work, thank you.
Moving on to 6.2. The controller is requesting to recreate the positions in the controller's office that were transferred to the Office of Budget and Finance.
Okay.
Now that the court has issued all final rulings against the commissioners' plan to move the controller functions to the budget office, it's time to restore the controller's powers according to state law. To that end, I'm introducing a motion at salary board to recreate the positions in the controller's office that were illegally transferred to the budget office in April. This will restore Lycoming County government to operate under Pennsylvania County Code. The positions are the second deputy general accountant, pay grade 8.9, general accountant, pay grades 8.9, financial technician, pay grades 5.6, two of them.
You're making a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Have a second.
I'll second this. I think that some discussion on this matter is more...
Great discussion.
I don't necessarily concur with the description you had of the results of the court decision, but I think that, that the system that is in place now is working. We are not having the problems that we had before in terms of errors in payroll, accounts payable, and the general ledger, and therefore, I think at this time, it would not be proved to move them back. I think that the work and the training that's going on there is productive and that it's, we're seeing results. I wouldn't necessarily agree that, with the characterization that they were legally moved.
There's actually nothing in the order that does declare them to be illegal. Did you read the order clearly? It doesn't make that determination. Ms. Randy Collins?
There was nothing in your request that specifically asked for interpretation of the law, which is why the judge did not speak to the law specifically. Salary board does not have the authority to transfer positions. Salary board creates and deletes positions, which is why I state that they were illegally transferred. They were not deleted and created. They were transferred, which salary board does not have the authority to do. That is where that comment comes from. Currently, we are not operating under the law. That is what I'm calling for you to do, to comply with state law. When you started this, you even commented that this was temporary. When you started this, you even commented that this was temporary. There is not training being done. The positions have not been filled. There have been errors. The annual comprehensive financial report is not done. The DCED report was due July 1st. It has not been filed. I am being contacted to do work of the accountants because they don't have time. It is not better, it is different. We can work together, as I have stated before. There is no reason for the contention that existed to create a scenario that costs the county taxpayers money in the courts. However, we need to comply with the law.
I don't want to rehash the whole of the life.
I don't either.
I mean, in all fairness, you say we can work together. But when we ask to have people brought down to training, you wouldn't bring them down. I mean.
And she's assuming that it's illegal. I totally disagree. So.
I mean, actually, if I think, if I recall, one of the employees there was moved back to your office.
Commissioner, you made a good point this morning. You know, the, the judge made a ruling that the contempt was not warranted because he confined, you know, irreparable harm, because he took action. Okay? I agree with that ruling. That's the ruling that he made. Didn't make any other ruling, to my knowledge. And I think everything's running smooth. I haven't heard anything wrong. I haven't seen any mistakes. Everything seems to be working fine, except for one thing. We have a, we have the taxpayers that are paying maybe $1,000 for a lawsuit that.
Because of their actions.
We'll agree with the, we'll agree with the judge's ruling about the, the, not contempt, but the, I'm going to re-adjuction. $52,000 was your, $52,587 was your attorney, $28,000, $28 was our attorney's fees. I think, I think we got the ruling that we wanted, or you wanted, and why are we going to pursue any more?
Because we are not complying with the law.
Okay. Well, it should just be noted the court didn't say we weren't complying with the law.
Because you didn't ask that question.
No, no, but if we weren't complying with the law, I think the court would have told us.
Of course it would have, absolutely. We were assuming that.
There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. Can we have the vote?
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can I read the items in some sense here?
Okay, action 3.6.3.
Is that okay if I read, or do you want Roxanne to read it?
For me to read it, please, first.
Is that okay there?
Yes, and then you can speak after that. Thank you.
6.3, the controller is requesting to restore the controller as secretary of the Salary Board.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to place the controller as secretary of the Salary Board, which is per the PA County Code Section 1622, which I have copies of, if you would like them.
Can you make a motion? You have a second? I'll make a second.
Can I second?
Second, okay.
I, I just, I make a point of order. We never stopped having the controller as secretary of the Salary Board. So to make a motion to restore implies that somehow that position was taken away. We never.
I made an assumption somewhere along the way in like coming county it stopped. That's why I used the word restore. I didn't know if it stopped. It has never been that way since I've been here.
You just said the key word, assumption.
I understand that.
It was never taken away.
I didn't say you did.
Well, maybe, wait, Mrs. Solicitor, would you, would you, would you?
I mean, the statutory section that she cites is correct.
And when I made my motion, I said place.
So here's an amendment. Would you accept amendment to just say recognize? Instead of restore, the word recognize.
I made the motion placed.
Yeah, I don't even know that it's discretionary, candidly. I mean, the statute says it is, or shall be, the secretary, or the controller shall be the Secretary of the Board.
Right, but the word restore means.
But that's on the agenda. When I made my motion, I said place.
Oh, I'm sorry. Say the motion again.
I also make a motion to place.
She also.
Motion to place what?
The controller as the secretary of the Salary Board, which is per the County Code Section 1622.
Are you removing the word restore?
I did. I set that in my email, and then when I made my motion.
But the point of the matter is, is she always wants.
Very.
Like, why are we having a motion?
Because that's not how we've acted. I don't set the agenda. I don't do the minutes. We've never acknowledged that I am secretary since I've been here.
Well, candidly, the, the setting of the agenda would rest with the chair.
Okay.
The secretary of duties aren't necessarily spelled out in the, in the.
I would assume it would stand with Robert's rules.
Whatever it may be, I think you have past practice to that. I think the point that the board's making is that the controller was never not the secretary.
And I'm not arguing that.
So by statute, the controller is the secretary.
Right.
And so I think the board may be questioning the necessity of a motion in light of the fact that the statute is clear that it shall be the secretary.
When I think secretary, I think what I do for the retirement board. So we send the agendas out, we do the minutes, we make sure that the board has what they need. So I would assume, again.
But the chair sets the agenda, and I've never denied you anything on the agenda.
I, I'm not saying that you have. I'm saying that I had asked to have this discussion, and we never did, which is why I asked for it to be on the agenda, because we've never had this discussion.
You know, if, if that's the case, I'm fine with it, because then, then you would know everything that's going on in the Salary Board.
That would be spectacular, what I've asked for for 16 years.
I'm fine with it, too.
I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's the statute.
Agreed.
But I, I think the issue of the duties of the secretary is distinct from the motion that she's made.
Yes.
I would question, and it's your call, if you simply want to recognize it, that's fine. But I don't think the board has a choice other than to have the controller be the secretary, whatever that means by statute.
I, I'm happy to agree that by statute, this controller is the secretary. I'd like to know who usually does which duties, only so that we don't go off. Because we had this experience once before where we agreed to something and, and things didn't go exactly as we planned. So rather than doing that, I think I'd like to solicit to give us some thoughts, not now necessarily, but who does what, like, and the secretary.
I guess I would question in the 30-some years I've been here, Human Resources has provided to the commissioner's office the information for a Salary Board action. And previously, we used to actually, our personnel actions went through Salary Board. And we did change that. But I would need to know, on whatever decision you made, how we need to proceed in presenting this information, so it gets on the agenda.
It would, it would just be copied, so she's included in everything, like I thought she always was.
She gets a copy now of the agenda.
Yeah.
So nothing, nothing, we're only going to change.
If it's acceptable to the rest of the members of the board, is it okay to reach out to other fifth-class counties, ask them how they handle Salary Board, what their secretary does? And I will come back and provide you that information.
Absolutely.
Hold up a second.
Sure.
Okay.
And you're invited.
And I don't think you need our permission to do anything. It's a free country.
I would like to do it with the board's agreement, so that we can work together on something.
But ultimately, what the goal of the secretary of this county is something that needs to be reviewed.
Right.
And don't get impacted with respect to its formal positions in the county.
Right, I mean, the only thing I would say, and I think he's saying that, is that even if all the other fifth-class counties did it a certain way.
And they probably don't do it all the same way.
No, but if we have a practice that's worked, and we don't want to create more havoc in our personnel and everything like that.
I don't want to create.
No, no, I know you don't. I'm not applying, that's what you're doing. I'm saying I, I wouldn't want to be, to think that just because the others do it that way, that we would do it that way.
When I think secretary, I would think that it would be not as involved, but similar to what I've done for the retirement board. So there would be a minute book in my office versus your office. So that is one big change to me. But that doesn't affect Human Resources.
Well, as part of our HR weekly meetings, when there are changes to the salary schedule, I do have a separate invitation for the controller's office to come and discuss. And lately, I've been giving you the information as to what's behind the action. So.
Which is extremely helpful.
We, we do have a process, but I guess I would want to know, moving forward, do I present these, I mean, we have our weekly meetings, we present it to I mean, you know, who's going to present what?
And your deputy has attended our discussions prior to the Tuesday meeting.
Yes.
Would you like to table your motion until you reach out to the fifth-class counties?
No, I think we can ignore, I mean.
I don't, I mean, I don't.
We don't need a motion.
There is no need for a motion. I mean, I think the title is the title, the function is a different issue, and it sounds like that's something that will be looked at and discussed.
Okay. Sounds good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the motion with John?
Oh.
Yeah, you have to keep the motion. Great, thank you.
Yes.
I think it's a discussion that, I, I'm not to beat a dead horse. But to be honest with you, in the six years I've been here, I never knew that the Salary Board had a secretary by statute. It's the kind of thing that we don't necessarily discuss, you know.
Coke.
Well, that's okay, so, so thanks for bringing it to our.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yep.
Will we convene the, well, during the Salary Board actions at this time, we convene the commission of committee.
Personnel actions with Roxanne.
In the Department of Public Safety Communications, Ariano Warner Gyris. This is an administrative change to her start date. Last week, we had it as August 17th. Her start date will be officially August 23rd. She is a full-time replacement telecommunications one without experience at pay grade 6, $16.46 an hour. In soil conservation, Matthew J. Long is a full-time replacement promotion, conservation district manager, pay grade 11, $51,053.83, and is to be effective September 5th, 2021. At pre-release, Tamika Allen is a full-time replacement female resident supervisor, pay grade 5, $15.37 an hour, effective September 5th, 2021.
Okay. Any discussion on these?
No, I'll just comment on the.
Conservation district. Where does that money come from, Eric?
From the conservation district? Comes from various places, including the, some from the state funding, from some Act 13 to the state. And they have a separate board that oversees the funds. But the director, you know, for people who follow this, we just had a new director. He had a lifetime chance to have a job that was not 35 miles from his house, and he chose to take that. And we're very excited that Matthew Long, who's a current employee, has been with the county for at least eight years, I think, is going to be the new director there. So we're looking forward to that. And that was the unanimous decision, I believe, by the board. Conservation, District Board recommendation.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
I'm moved to approve. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya Too has an information item.
Where is Maya?
Mr. Nurse.
I'm just acknowledging that we'll be requesting bid for a floodplain housing remediation project. This is part of our 2014 ceremonies. It's been an ongoing process that we've had. Obviously, we've had some disasters along the way, a pandemic, which has all, you know, delayed the project, but we're ready to move forward with it now.
Okay.
Then moving on to the action items, Maya Too. You have the first four. Do you want me to just let you go through them?
Sure. The first item I have for you is to vote on agreement with the Stige Digital Investigative Investigations Contract. It's for the Public Defender's Office. This is to digitally investigate and analyze case data for an upcoming case from Commonwealth versus Cecil Thompson for the armed home invasion. This is not a budgeted item, though, but they do have budget funds to cover the costs associated with it, which is not to exceed $20,000.
Any comments or questions? Or a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
All in favor, sign, or any second.
One sec, which, which one of these?
9.1, 9.1. That's, that's.
Yeah, I do, I do have a question.
Sure.
Second or first?
Okay, yes.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
When it talks on Exhibit B, it says, "Act of Mission, Google Cloud Account at $550 per account." I, I don't understand what that means.
I think what happens if there were some digital transcriptions occurring, and that they're going to be going into that account and analyzing all of that to determine. It's part of the case, from what I understand.
Well, the contractor shall be compensated at the following rates. They're going to be compensated by us, correct?
That's correct. So for each time, he has to analyze and investigate that particular account, there's a cost associated to do that, and that's where that would fall at.
And, and what would be, like, the worst-case scenario? How many times would he go into an account?
I, I personally think you're probably talking, at least, a minimum, you're going to always have at least two accounts, because if he's sending something to someone, then they're going to have to look at that one and another. So my personal opinion would probably be two, unless there's more. That I can't speak to. Obviously, that's something the Public Defender herself may have to comment on. But I would say at the minimum, there would be at least two.
Okay.
If at all. I mean, it may not even come to light either, depending upon, you know, how the case goes as well.
I think if you look at.
This is for a specific case.
Okay, right. If you look at Exhibit A, it's Commonwealth v. Cecil Thompson.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that that cloud account is going to be associated with Commonwealth v. Cecil Thompson. And, correct me, Mr. McDona, if I'm wrong, but by having it as a cloud account, it's going to allow the Public Defender's Office to get access to it. So instead of a filing cabinet in someone's office, it's going to be kept in the cloud, have access by public defenders, have access by the investigators.
My thought process is, is that there was obviously, as part of case material, you know, something that occurred through an email format that is requiring us to be part of the, the case, so, and compensation.
Okay, any motion accepted? I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry.
The next item I have is to vote on amendment to MOU with Roads to Freedom, the Center for Independent Living in North Central Prey. What we are doing is modifying this amendment to allow for it to be retroactive to assist them with non-congregate care, which is Category B, FEMA public assistance monies, which they're trying to seek. And in order to do that, we have to make the MOU retroactive to the term for which is allowable for costs.
Changing the dates.
Yeah, and there's no formal approval yet. So once there is formal approval, obviously, that will come before the commissioners as a formal action to acknowledge that, that grant award, too, should it be awarded. But it's just all preliminary and housekeeping work that needs to be done now.
Okay, any motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you.
The next item is to award the Hazardous Material Response Fund Grant Agreement with PMA. It's an amount of $21,019. This is a 2021 budgeted item. And as you know, if you're familiar with this particular grant, this is to help pay for Sarah fees, which also has a litigation program out of DPS. And this helps offset the salary infringement for the Sarah support specialists.
Okay, any motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
And then the last item I have for you is to vote toward the Radiation Emergency Response Fund Grant Agreement with PMA. That's an amount of $5,876. Again, this is a 2021 budgeted item. And this is to carry out the purposes of the Radiological Emergency Response Program, again, at DPS. And this is just to offset some of their equipment and supplies.
Okay, any motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
9.5, Jerry Kennedy, to vote on the purchase of three new stomachs. of three new stenograph machines for the court reporters.
Morning, commissioners. Jerry Kennedy, Information Services Director. Court Administration has requested the replacement of all six of their stenograph machines. This year, we are going to replace three of them with current-year budget funds, at a cost of $15,435. The remaining three will be in next year's budget request.
And this is a budgeted item?
This is, they're redirecting budgeted funds.
Okay.
Now, as you, as you look at them, look at them, Tony Stone, I could be... Has the change, has the equipment changed at all?
Not a whole lot. It does have some electronics in it to do various, saving their work on various formats, S D cards, U S B cards, stuff like that. But for the most part, no, it hasn't really changed a lot.
And with voice recognition anymore, you wonder, you know, why they have to still make those decisions?
I'm sure it's buried somewhere in legalese.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Jenny Pacchiano is on the line for 9.6. Jenny?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
This is for the 2021 Fair for Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund Grant Agreement with P H F A for $948,000. It was for seven projects we submitted with our grant application last fall. And our grant application included awards for the Supportive Housing Program through STEP, the Regional Homes in Need Program, also through STEP, the Urgent Need Home Repair Program through STEP, the Master Leasing Program through Transitional Living Centers, Habitat for Humanities Memorial Homes Project, Y W C A Liberty House, and American Rescue Workers Rental Assistance Program.
Okay, fantastic.
Jenny, how does that compare to 2019's allocation? Do you know, offhand?
I certainly do. 2019, it was, it was a little less. In 2019, we got, we received $1,150,000. In 2020, we received $990,000. And this past year, it's $948,000. So, this was actually our 2020 grant application, and we're considering in our 2021 grant contract. So, it's gone down a little bit, but it is related to gas. Marcellus Field Drilling in Lake Homing County. So, it's directly correlated to the amount of gas that's drilled here.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you. Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further comments or questions? During that, can all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
9.7, J C Yorks, he's on the line also.
Yes, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioners, 9.7, change order number one for the Transfer Station Shoot Upgrade Project, the amount of $30,000. This project, we went out to bid approximately two months ago. We received one bid from Green Machine. We had several inquiries, but Green Machine was a successful bidder. After the R M S staff and Green Machine pulled up the drawings, we went back to work on some stuff. We made some, several changes to what we wanted to see in the conveyor system. We need to have a $30,000 change order to the project. We are well under budget. We had budgeted $400,000 for this project for 2021. But we're well under it. So, the original bid on the conveyor system was $225,270. It's now $255,270. This, we want to get this, keep this moving. We are looking at September 27th as the week of shutdown for the transfer station on Third Street, with a hopeful reopen on October 4th. So, we want to keep this project moving.
Okay. It's a budgeted item, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
Commissioners, 9.8. This is a change order number one for landfill gas well installation project, the amount of $643,532. This is a project we just opened the bids a month ago. R and L was the successful contractor. One of the things that we found is that R M S staff, we've simply run out of, we're running out of time to get the dirt that we were, we needed to get screened for the project. Multiply this with the fact that there's still work on the section of property that we have north of Digger, the Digger site, that we still have to get out of the way so that they can get the access road into the Digger facility. So, we're asking an approval for this. This funds would come out of the closure fund, because this project is still a part of our total closure project that we've got over the next year or two. So, this is part of the well, landfill gas well installation project. We need the dirt for that, but at the same time, we're going to have them screen the dirt out of the area where the Digger site needs to be. So, they're roughly going to do 55,000 cubic yards of soil. $15,000 of it has to be one-inch minus, and $15,000 of it has to be three-inch minus. And of course, you're going to have spoils and so forth, but they're also going to truck it over and put it up by the water tower so that it's accessible for the contractor and so forth when they do the gas well, when they actually bring the wells in line, so... Again, this funding, the project started out at $1,499,466. It now moved, it would move us to $2,142,998. Again, this is out of the closure funds that we set aside for this work.
That's what I was going to say, okay. So, that first one, I looked at the $645.